Educating, informing, serving. TV keeping government honest.
All right, so if Darlene can record that Denise and I voted in the affirmative to add Taylor Hill to the agenda. Minutes from the prior meeting.
I'll accept those as they were printed.
I will second that. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right. We will move on to public comments. And during public comments, a select board will not allow any personal narratives, complaints about any elected elected official, those appointed by the town or employee of the town. If an individual has an issue they wish to bring to the select board concerning personnel, it should be written and submitted to the select board. Any comments during public comments should be germane to an issue the select board can address. Just so everybody knows that.
He's back.
All right. So we will go to public comments and I will go just down my screen. So Hannah, do you have anything for public comments?
Nope.
All right. Danny, public comments? Danny?
No.
All right, April?
No.
Okay. Darlene?
No.
Matt?
Nope.
Donna? Donna, do you have anything for public comments? You have to take yourself off mute. All right, none, I will move on. If somebody does have a comment, we're not able to.
David, there are a couple more people on that. I don't, Krista Gay is on. And Tim Ferguson.
I haven't got to them yet.
Oh, okay, I thought you were doing public comments, sorry.
I am doing public comments, but I'm going down the list as I.
Oh, okay.
So. Krista, do you have anything for public comments?
No.
Okay, Sandy?
No, David.
Uh, Tim? Tim or Sherry? Public comments? Tina?
No.
Um, anybody else that I didn't call that does have any, uh, anything for public comments? All right.
David, yes, David, sorry it took us a while to get unmuted.
Okay, there you go.
I just, uh, this is Sherry. I have just a question as to whether or not there's any indication at this point as to, within a month, do we anticipate still being on virtual meetings? Do you have any clue yet as to where that's at?
I think we're gonna take our cue from the state as to what's going on. Hopefully, the meeting can be held at the town office, but.
Oh, before, before we move on, I'm sorry, I just remembered something else. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear.
Okay, so the other thing that we've been talking about is moving ahead with a application for a grant for a historic marker. This would be a much nicer marker than the sign that's on the property right now. And we had originally had a conversation a number of months back about the possibility of, um, you know, clearing the corner of that triangle property, um, right by the, the building, possibly getting the permission of the owner to put the sign on it, or possibly to have that land gifted to the town. And the committee talked about it at the last two meetings, I believe, actually, and what we would like to do is to actually put the sign on the town property where the building is, near the bulletin board, perhaps where the existing, you know, white sign that is there that says that it's, you know, a historic site. Replace that sign with this new one. Um, I can send you an image of what the sign would look like. It won't be ours information on it, but it's the, the design that they use. But replace that sign there with this. But what we would like to do, and this is what I needed either the board to help me understand what we need to do about it, or perhaps Matt. We would like to be able to put two other signs approaching the meeting house on Route 35 from either direction that would say something like historic site marker ahead on the left, historic site marker ahead on the right. And I don't know, you know, I don't know anything about getting those signs, where we would go to get those signs, what's involved in placing those signs. So that's what I wanted to hear from either the board or from Matt.
Well, I don't know myself, but it might go into the, you see them, but you might, we may need a permit as this billboard law.
For a billboard law?
Yeah, because it's advertised, well, it's, it's not, but it is an advertisement to, to the historic marker there. So it, there's a chance that we may have to have that.
So would I talk to the Secretary of State about that? Would I talk to, who would I talk to?
You could start with the Secretary of State. I suspect they're gonna allow that. I know that the state sells, um, and I think it's only on state highway. They sell those signs, uh, that direct people to different businesses and stuff.
Yeah, right, those are those green signs, I know what you're talking about. I think I've seen something different that sort of announces a historic site ahead, and I don't know where.
I think those are like those brown signs. It's similar to the business signs, but they're a little different. I think they're brown.
Okay, do you think they come through the same avenue?
That I don't know. I would check with the Secretary of the State or check with, um, BLTC might know. I, I'm not sure about that.
Okay, and I'll check with the Historic Preservation Division too, they may know about that.
Okay.
But just in general, the concept, are you guys okay with that? Are there any other issues that I should be thinking about?
Um, I'm fine with it. You know, as long as it doesn't clear the view or anything on that corner there.
Right, well, and, and that's the other piece that we're hoping to do is to pursue at least just opening up that corner, um, you know, from trees. There, there had been a discussion before and Matt was in agreement on, and I think you guys were as well, for the town crew to clear that out. So I need to get back in touch with the property owners and talk that through and see if we can go ahead and get that corner of that triangle cleared and opened up so that the view is a little bit better. I do believe that appreciation goes out to Jeannie Anderson and Terry there on the corner of Meeting House Road for cleaning up a pretty unsightly remnants of boxes for trash. That's gone, I'm pretty sure they're the ones that are responsible for that being cleaned up, but I haven't seen them. Um, but that makes that corner a little bit more appealing now to open up and put our signs up and get people to see the building.
Okay, anything else, Sherry?
Nope, that, I think covers it.
Okay. Anybody else have anything for boards and officials?
David, Sandy here. You may have noticed that the listers have posted their grievance day for June 2nd. And for the Cemetery Commission, Dawn has ordered new flags which have come in and we will be out this weekend placing them on the appropriate stones.
Okay. Um, when's the next cemetery meeting? Sandy?
What?
No, do you have the date of the next cemetery meeting?
Uh, no, I don't, and Dawn's involved with the school board meeting tonight. Which she also told me to tell you he's not doing that again.
All right. Anybody else for boards and officials?
Can you hear me, David?
I can.
Okay, this is Janet.
Yeah.
Um, the Budget Committee met this week, last week, I'm sorry. Or was it this week? Last week. And we were wondering if Darlene has received any renewals for the pre-buy from Dead River.
I do not know. Darlene, do you know? Darlene?
Okay, no, I haven't received anything.
Okay.
Um, is that something that you wanted the committee to pursue because it's getting time for contracts for pre-buy to?
I think we should, we should right now because the price is, is pretty low at the moment, so, and I suspect it's not gonna go much lower, so yeah, if we could get some prices for maybe next month or at the latest July? What's everybody else think? Denise?
Yes, I think we should do the pre-buy.
Yeah, we should do the pre-buy and I think we should probably call around to get prices from the other vendors, not just Dead River who we went with last year, just to keep everyone on toes and to see who is the cheapest price. And as long as they can meet our requirements to deliver it when we need it delivered.
All right. Anything else for the Budget Committee?
Um, is the Budget Committee gonna look into that? Yeah, we'll look into that if the Select Board approves it so we can.
Yes, I don't know if you need a motion for that, but I think, yes, I think that's the agreement for that, that we do want that.
Okay, and then the other thing, we were thinking about having our next meeting at the town office. Is that something that's all right now, or should we wait at least one more meeting?
Um, I think we can probably have it there, but we, we should also have the ability to, um, if, if somebody wants to join the meeting electronically, that they are able to, because we can only have a quarter of what the capacity for the building is at this time. That means tomorrow, but it, so if there's more than, more than the 25%, then.
What is the exact building capacity for that building?
It's actually 59 people, so a quarter would be 14 and a little more, an extra limb or two.
Well, just let half their body in the building, then that should work.
Yeah.
But just, but just maybe have it available that they can go on, that they can join it by electronically.
Generally, David, at our Budget Committees, it's meetings, it's just us, we've really had more than two people, so.
I understand, but just.
Well, Hannah, or maybe Hannah can answer that right now, that maybe we can have that so that it's set up that way.
Yeah, I think, you know, if I'm there, we can do it on my tablet. Um, if I'm not there, I can try to get it set up on the town laptop beforehand so I can join remotely.
Yeah, I was thinking about that.
Yeah. But we'll figure it out.
All right.
We have the technology, yep.
All right, anything else for the Budget Committee?
No, I think that's it.
Okay. Anybody else for boards and officials? All right, we will move on to, uh, the 2020 budget. I was thinking that we would want to talk about, I know everybody is, other communities are concerned whether they're gonna get the money in for taxes, what the economic future holds. And I was thinking that we may want to direct the Budget Committee to look in areas and, and we discuss areas where we can hold off on some spending that, that we had planned to do until, until next year on the chance that we don't have, we don't get the money that we are expecting to get in. The, uh, we can't spend the money that we voted for something else, so if the money has been voted to a fund, a special fund that we have, we can't then use that money without a vote of the town. But if the money's there, we would be able to vote on it at a special town meeting or the regular town meeting to, for a deficit if we have one, so. What do we think about that, Denise?
Yeah, David, I just have a quick question about that. Have we heard back from the state yet when the homeowner renter rebates are gonna be in? I know that you're, you're trying to cut the budget back, but my concern is when that money is coming in, before we, people have to start putting their tax bills. I, I do want to cut the budget in some places where we can.
Well, I'm not sure that necessarily we can say that we're gonna be cutting it, but we're at least putting it on hold.
That's fine, such as, um, culverts and guardrails and such like that?
Yes, that was what I was thinking. I mean, there is a chance that we will not, and I don't know this is to be the case, but we may not get the state aid for highways. I know that that had been talked about in my period as, as one of the things that they may cut.
A hundred percent of that they're gonna cut, or?
They don't, we don't have an answer to that at this point, but if we did, that will leave a $40,000 hole in our, in our budget that we will have to find somewhere else.
David, if you guys want, I'll meet with the Budget Committee and go over the budget.
Okay.
And I found a few places, like if we don't do some things where we could save quite a lot of money or put it on hold until we know what's coming for money.
Right. What, Jim, what do you think about that?
Yep, I think that's good.
All right.
That sounds great for me too.
All right.
Did the state give an idea when they would let everybody know about?
No, it'll be the legislature that has to pass it if they, if they do get rid of it, uh, don't give a state aid for highways and that will know it when they pass the budget. So. So yeah, why don't we do that and then we can discuss it at our next meeting and, uh, or we can have a special meeting if we hear something else in between. There's also the issues with the school, probably Dawn's hearing right now. They don't have a budget, they don't have a time when they can vote on their budget. And they're having, from what I have read, they have been having some difficulties with that. Not only our school district, but there are 18 other school districts that are in the same predicament that has, have, that have no budget as of yet, so. We're not sure how that's gonna turn out, so.
David, I got a, um, agenda for a June 25th meeting for the school.
Is that? That was, that was a, a school district meeting or a?
A school district meeting, yes.
Was that the one they put on hold though?
Yeah.
So are you sure it's that date? Because I knew that they had planned one and then they put that on hold.
Yeah, I, I, it's just a warning for the annual meeting. And it's for June 25th at 7:00 PM.
And where's that gonna be?
Uh, uh, they're actually talking about doing Australian ballot.
Okay.
So that, so that meeting is not just an informational meeting, it is to vote on the budget?
Yes, I believe so.
But if, yeah, I, I'm not sure, I, I knew that they had had a couple of plans. Uh, I'm not sure that it's been firmed up, but this may be news, but I, I read an email recently and maybe the school board meeting will give some clarity to it all, so I won't add any for it, but, but yeah, I, I think we should look at least, of trying to find at least the amount of the state aid to highways, and if that is, is gone, then we won't be $40,000 over budget, so.
Could I ask a budget clarification question?
Sure.
Um, so at town meeting, the town approved $32,000 for constructing a new bathroom at the town garage.
Yes.
And we've put that in the budget. I don't know, I was just wondering how the select board wanted to handle that. Do we want it as a line item in the budget? Is that project still happening?
Well, I think that's a project that probably won't still be happening, but, um, the, uh, we can't use that money for anything else, so, but the money will come in and, and if we're gonna use it for something else, we'll have to revote it at the town meeting, my understanding.
Okay, thank you.
All right, anything else for the 2020 budget? All right. Let's go to Taylor Hill. Danny, did you want to talk about that?
Yeah, I thought the last time when you talked that we're gonna discuss some stuff on that. That's kind of what I want to happen.
Okay.
Once you guys sent that appeal letter, you know, it sends off a timeline of, on my part of doing stuff with the court, so.
Did you, did you appeal it?
Yes, I did.
Okay.
And I'm still going forward with more stuff, but I still don't understand, and I'd like to hear from all three board members what they think the problem is of Taylor Hill becoming a town road.
Well.
I got the, I got the minutes, Darlene got me the minutes that I asked for the last time. I still need the minutes where it shows who was at the hearing, there's nothing about the hearing. And it looks like to me that the selectmen are the one that issued the takeover up there on Walker Road. And it said it was washed out in 2006, and I'd like to know who paid to bring that back up. Seems it was not a town road, it was a class four, which I know the answer to that, but I'd like to hear it from you guys, because it seems like, you know, that being treated a little bit unlike some others in town.
At the, at the time, 2006, you, uh, I'm trying, it'll, hopefully my memory isn't terribly faulty, but it was a class four road. Uh, at the time, you had to, um, add, if there were culverts or bridges on a class four road that washed out, the town was responsible for repairing culverts and bridges. There were a number of culverts on the hill that were washed out, were sticking up in the air. The town paid to have that repaired because to get to the culvert, you had to, to repair the roadway. The state passed a section in, I guess they called the big bill, uh, that year and said that if the town made that section of, uh, Walker Road, a class three road, then the state would contribute 90% of the repair cost to that, um, to what the town has expended. Uh, we, we made it the town road and the state paid us the 90% that the town had put forward to fix that road.
You do have other class four roads that are missing bridges and culverts too. Maybe you don't have any houses on it, but if you're gonna follow the standards on one, you should follow them on all.
Okay.
But I still would like to know what, what seems to be the problem about Taylor Hill becoming a town road and why we're, you know, it looks like we're not getting the answers and why we're gonna end up having to go to court over this when there's so many places up here that pay taxes in this town at the same rate as everybody else.
I, I understand that, that situation. If, uh, if there is an appeal pending, and I have not talked to the town's attorney or, or an attorney about this, uh, I think it's probably not wise for the select board to make comments on this at this meeting, uh, without talking to an attorney or, Darlene, have you received any information on the appeal that there is?
No, you guys have not been sent summons yet.
No.
That's why I wanted to talk tonight, because if we're not gonna discuss stuff like you guys kept saying we're going to, I have a time period or I get kicked out and we can't do nothing. And it seems like I'm just being timed out by you guys.
Well, I think, I think the time you had, how many, how long did you have after the issuance of the notice?
Well, you guys on the notice, you gave us three days. We had to take and go to the court on that because of when the date was on the letter and when you guys actually mailed it, only allowed for three days because it stated right in the letter is 30 days from the date it was signed, which you guys said you didn't sign it on the date. You signed it afterwards, so I don't know how that works, but I'm still in all my time periods, but I have time to do the summons. I have everything ready to do it, but I, you know, it gets expensive for everybody.
No, I understand that, but.
30 days from when the letter was sent.
Yeah, that was my understanding as well, but.
For me to send it to the, to the courts. Oh, for your, for your guys, your decision?
No.
That's not the way it was.
The way I understood it to be, Danny, is that you had 30 days from when you, from when the letter was sent, not three days.
No, when you guys made the decision to say, to, on our, taking our road over, where you said you're not going to, you guys had 30 days to send that out from your decision to notify us. From the date that you guys signed it, which I think was the 26th, we got it like, from that day on, it was like 30, 28 days later is when we got it. But the courts said, go by the date of the certified letter and that would be valid enough. So that, that, I've, my appeal I have already in, but I haven't filed it, I don't have to send that out right off, I can do that whenever. So you guys haven't had nothing sent to you yet?
Yeah.
Okay. Well, like I say, I think we should, we, if, if you have appealed it, I don't think we should be discussing it at a, at the, the board meeting here. If, you know, I, I'm not opposed to discussing it with you, uh, and I, I don't want to make it seem that we're trying to not discuss.
David, when we first started this, you know, what, five months ago, you guys said, all three of you guys said to me that you wanted to work with us. Show me one time where you guys have worked with us. I want, there's no minutes when all three selectmen in Darlene and lawyer rode up our hill on the day of the viewing. It's a state law that if there's more than a majority of selectmen together, there must be minutes. We have none of that, there's no minutes even when you guys took over the Walker, up the Walker Road, all your decisions, there's nothing about the hearings. And you know, you guys keep saying it's a private road and all, but our road is just as good as any of your town roads and it is solely up to the select board to say, yes, we'll take it over or no. And that's where I'm going with this, because otherwise we have to go to the court on it because you guys will not talk to us or give us any information or answer any of the questions.
Well, let us consult with, with our, my opinion is, is that we consult with our attorney. Well, let us consult with, with our, in my opinion is, is that we consult with our attorney. If you have appealed it. I am reluctant to then now start talking about it in an open meeting. Without.
But you guys have done it in a really nice way to push it out another thirty days, David. When you took and said the last time. That you were gonna put this on the meeting and be ready. And that's the way I'm getting really fed up with it, cause it seems like all we're doing is kept being pushed out to max our time out, so it can't happen at all. And you're the only one that speaks. I'd like to hear from the other two members.
Denise?
Danny, I, I don't know why it wasn't on the agenda. I, I would like to consult the attorney and set up a meeting. We don't have to put it out thirty days. We can have a special select board meeting to discuss it. If, to keep it in the timeline, it does not need to go out the thirty days to the next board meeting.
Well, I'd like to hear an answer on it and why you guys are not willing to take it over.
Well, that was in the decision uh, that, that was, was given out.
By a petition, to have the selectmen to look in it and you declined to look into it.
Well, we had the hearing about taking it over and we declined to take it over as it was.
To, to lay it out and take it over, but you never gave any information of why. And you guys said you, you would discuss that with us and you never did.
Jim, do you have anything you wanna say on it? Dude, what do you think? Should we talk to our lawyer before we discuss it since Danny says he's upheld already?
Well, I have one question for Danny. How do you guys keep track of your expenses for maintaining Taylor Hill?
Everybody on this house has to pay into a road fund of two hundred and forty dollars a year. We do not pay anybody for plowing and sanding. We all have, quite a few of us have that stuff, so we do it, or we do it by hand. But everybody up here pays two hundred and forty dollars per parcel.
Any difficulty of collecting that at any time, or have people been? Good about paying for the maintenance of the road?
Uh, everybody has pretty much always paid. Sometimes there's been difficulties, but we have a, a. Agreement, signed agreement, how it works if it has to go to the court. But you gotta remember that our taxes are the same base rates as everybody else that lives around a town road, and we pay this above and beyond. There's, there's sixty-two signatures, I think, on that petition that was basically saying, you know, you should look into this.
Yes, um. We were told that your house rates or yours would be the same if it was a town road. But that it would, the land rates would go up just a little bit, but that's an insignificant thing. Do you know how much it would cost to hire a contractor to maintain that road?
No, because they, they, it's always, probably would be based on storms. It's much cheaper, cheaper for the town to do it, because you have a full-time road crew. And all, we use the town sand to sand it now, so it's just a matter of you guys grading and putting gravel down, but. Like I say, we have about fourteen places up here, and you've got roads with one or two properties on it. That are longer that you guys do now. We, we can't find the records, because all the records in the town were all burnt many, many years ago, cause. God knows this road hadn't been an old stage road, there's old cellar holes up here. If you could find them and all the legal paperwork, but you can't find them in the office. But it comes right down to.
All the records.
Steve, what's that?
All the old records on the road are not there. Not Taylor Hill, but any of the old road.
Right, this was, this road was always either in reference called Parkers Road. Or I can't remember the other name that it was called originally.
Alright, so.
Also referred to as Old Orchard Road.
Old Orchard, yep.
So Denise, you, when you said you'd like to talk to the attorney to, I'll, as well, you wanna make that motion before we proceed with this? And then we can. Call a special meeting?
I'll, that motion that we do contact our attorney, Danny, have you, you said you haven't started the appeal process? I, I'm confused about that. You submitted the paperwork, but you have it.
I had to file an appeal, send it to the court, stating that I was not happy with your decision, cause that had a time period on it.
Okay.
But I have, I have not sent out anything for summons yet. The summons will, you will actually receive something in the mail saying that you are being sued. None of that has been processed through yet.
Well, it's.
And I haven't started, I haven't, I have it, but I have not sent any of it, because you guys said you were willing to work with us.
Yeah, what was the, um, uh, is that just because the court? Uh, is, is, uh, has been closed or? Because.
What's that?
No, he just said that's cause he thought we were gonna work with him.
No, I understand, but the court should have set a, a hearing or a, a docket or something if you've appealed it.
I have docket numbers, but I have not filed the, you guys get notified for any of it, so it's still not sent out.
So, i- I mean, once you file for a docket and, and do the appeal, that's, that's the.
If I don't file the, if I don't file the summons, it stops right now.
Well, you'd have to go back to court to withdraw your appeal. It wouldn't just stop automatically.
Either way, if I don't follow through with the rest of it, it's not gonna end up ever go anywhere. But that can be, I would do that, but we're gonna meet an agreement.
But let's hope we can.
I, I would like.
Before we go any further, I will second Denise's motion that, uh, that we, before we discuss this as a select board anymore. That we consult with our attorney on this, as, so we. The town uh. Needs to have some.
David, could you repeat that? Because you were cutting out.
Denise made the motion, i- am I correct Denise? Can you, you give your motion for us? That we.
I would like to, I make the motion to consult our attorney and have a special meeting. Just to discuss Taylor Hill after we've spoken with our attorney. And it does not need to wait until the next town meeting, the next select board meeting. I wanna have it so that we can meet prior to the thirty days.
Alright, that's, I will second that. Alright. All those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
And you're aye, Jim?
Yes.
Alright.
So, this is Sherri.
So when, when can we have that meeting?
Well, let's, let's speak with our attorney first, and then we will call, we will call a special select board meeting for that purpose.
The sooner the better.
Sooner the better would be good. So. Alright, Sherri, did you have something to say about this?
Yeah, I, um, I, I, a couple of things. One, I feel like. What concerns me is that the motion that just passed is ending any kind of conversation on this, so that, that's. Not something I feel good about hearing. Um, but the comment I wanna make is that my recollection is that this came up. Initially, last summer, when folks from Taylor Hill came to a select board meeting, I happened to be at it. And they were talking about getting some help from the town. Um, for some of the maintenance for this road. And then the suggestion was made about the town taking over the road. I don't think that's what they originally came asking for. So I, I'd have to go back and look through minutes to see what was discussed, but it just kind of really boggled my mind to. Hear that now we're at a point where we're going into legal matters. And that means that probably all of the conversations about this are gonna go into executive session, and nobody else in town is gonna. Be privy to those conversations, and that disturbs me.
David, I have a, a question to ask, and it uh, maybe has. Addressed uh, at other times, but I don't know the answer to it. Why can't this issue of the town taking over Taylor Road? Be submitted to a special town meeting and let the citizens of this town um, decide the issue rather than three individuals?
Well, I believe the statute says that the select board has to do that. That it's our responsibility to do that.
But what if the citizens in a special town meeting direct the select board to go in a certain direction? Wouldn't you have to follow that?
I don't believe it would. I believe that would.
It's solely up to the selectmen.
And, and yet there have been certainly times when something is solely up to the selectmen, that the selectmen have put it to a town. Meeting to get advisement on it. So I guess. Me back to the question, or I guess to the question that Danny has asked and probably others from Taylor Hill. What is the objection to what they're asking for?
Danny asked that question again, and none of you have addressed that in this meeting. None of you have stated what your objection is.
If, if you want to see, and I do not have it with me. It is in the decision, uh, mail and need a copy that it will be at the town office that you can read. And, and that, at this point, is the official. Standing of us, of this select board at this time.
With those of us that are on the meeting right now that have not seen that letter?
I, I, if I said I did not have that. The decision of the select board. But because we've been told that there is an appeal, eventual legal action. Uh, I think it's best that the select board discuss their attorney first, and then we will proceed from there.
But my understanding is that the legal action came because that was the option presented to them in the letter that was sent by you. So.
An option to appeal the decision of the block.
Okay, I haven't seen the letter, so I don't know.
Okay.
But even though this, your lawyer could say, no, don't take it over, the selectmen have the power to say. These are taxpayers in our town, and yes, we will take it over. It, the lawyer is always gonna tell you no, the state will always tell you no, because if you take it over, then even the state has to contribute for state aid. So listening to your lawyer is always gonna be a no answer. That's why we're at, we, now where we are. It's up to you, that's the way the law reads. Yeah, and it's discouraging when we vote you three in there, and we cannot even get an answer back of your feelings of why it cannot happen.
That Danny, why I would like a special select board, a special town meeting. That would advise the uh, select board how to proceed, and then if they defy. The, the um, the wishes of the town, we, we know there's something going on here other than what meets this uh.
Well, I, I think the petition of sixty-some odd signatures in town pretty much has already guided them to what to do. So I don't see why cost, I don't wanna bring a special town meeting to this town. And cost all the money for something like this when it's been presented already. And now it's just gonna cost taxpayers more money to have a special meeting.
Uh, this is Krista Gay, can I say something?
And I know even on the right of ways, they all say it has to be three rods, and this was sent back in your letter from your attorney. And it states right in there, three rods unless recorded otherwise. I know I'm not a lawyer, but I do understand what that says. You can record it as other than three rods. It can be two rods, it can be one rod. All the papers that we showed you on the widths and amount of vehicles and everything, this road meets all that stuff.
It, it indicates that uh. A road, right, it can be less than three rods, but a town road is supposed to be three rods.
Unless recorded otherwise.
Yeah.
Writing the law your lawyer sent to us.
Chris, did you wanna say something?
Uh, yes, sir. So I have a copy of the letter, uh, cause I know some individuals were asking. Um, about what was said in that, and so at the bottom of the letter. For the conclusions, it says, without knowing how much work and expense will be required to qualify Taylor Hill Road. As a class three town highway, the select board lacks the information necessary to judge. Whether the public good necessity or convenience of the inhabitants requires this decision. So I just wanna clarify, did the select board deny this because you don't know what the expenses would be? Is that your reason?
That is a reason that we denied it, yes.
Okay, so can you just clarify in your own words what that is? You, you don't know what the expense would be to take it over?
I, 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 I'm not gonna try and add or better clarify uh, that at this point in time.
But you wrote it, so I just wanna know what you meant when you wrote it.
Uh, our attorney assisted us in making the decision.
I'm just nervous that you're telling people why you're doing something, or your attorney is, and you don't know what those reasons are, so. I just wanted to, to say that.
Okay, alright. Anybody else have anything on this before we move on? Alright, then we will move on to warrants and mail. I uh, will make a motion that we approve the warrants as presented. Is there a second?
Yeah, second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Denise?
Sorry, I said aye, but I was on mute, aye.
Alright, we'll move on to roads. Matt, are you there?
Yep, I'm here.
Alright.
Yeah, so I got a, I got a phone call from Wyndham Regional. They've got our road inventory erosion all done. We're supposed to be getting maps at the town office. Hopefully this next week.
We have them already, Matt.
Alright, good, um, are you gonna be down to the town office Monday?
Yes.
Alright, I gotta stop down and grab them. I have a meeting. I'm supposed to meet with Lisa from Wyndham Regional Tuesday. And go over our crucial sections. The ones that have to get done. Fairly, fairly soon. And uh, see what they call for action on those sections.
Anything else?
No.
How's the equipment?
Everything's good.
Everything's running, everything's good?
Yep.
Now, we still, well, we were talking about uh, looking at, at some things to put on hiatus. We have already reserved the over the rail mower, correct?
Yes, we, we scheduled that, that's coming the, uh, the week of August tenth.
So even if we tried to put that on, we'd still have to pay for it, is that? Probably proceed with that, I would think, instead of pay for it and not have it, so.
Yeah, I'm holding off on everything else. Right now, like the guardrails, the crack ceiling and stuff like that.
Okay.
Until after we meet in June. And figure out what you guys wanna do.
Alright. Anybody else got anything for roads? Alright, hearing nothing. I do not believe we need an executive session at this point in time, to, Denise, do you?
Nope.
No.
Alright. Uh, is there any further business? I will make a motion that we adjourn.
Second.
All those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
We will stand adjourned, thank you.